Good morning. Welcome to the Town Council Town Managers Performance Evaluation Subcommittee of January 5th at 10:30. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being videotaped and audio recorded, as well as being remotely broadcast via Zoom webinar. If there is anyone in our viewing audience who is taping this meeting, would you please announce yourself? Don, I don't think we have anybody in attendance.
Doesn't look it.
I don't see anybody. Okay.
Four participants. That means him too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So hearing and seeing none, I'd like to move on to our first agenda item. Review, approval, and release. Yes, Pat?
I'd like to volunteer to take the minutes if Kathy is tired of it already.
Well, I already started. I don't mind. This is likely part of our last meeting for a while, so.
Yeah.
I want to do it. I won't fight you for it.
Yeah, Kathy, I said it before and I'll say it again on here. You've done a great job and I thank you for stepping up. Seriously.
I agree.
Yeah, we're starting to hear off on a good foot again. So with the review of the agenda, review, approval, and release of executive minutes from previous meetings. And Kathy, I think it was you that made an observation that we don't approve the executive session minutes.
Well, we can approve them within our own body, but it's the Chair of the Council who, with the clerk from time to time, is required to review them to make the decision whether or not they are suitable for release. And release only means that if a public request should come regarding an executive session, that the President of the Council and the clerk decide if it's able to be sent out to the inquiryer. Things that are held would usually pertain to matters of like ongoing negotiations. So if you had a negotiation session with a bargaining unit and you knew you were going to have others, you can't release any of those for public knowledge. And so that happens from time to time with Jeannie. When I was President, we would do it two, three times a year. You wait till you have a half a dozen or more meetings to look at. But if the matter is resolved and is closed, then you can say, release it if someone from the public wants to have knowledge of it.
Right. Now, in this instance, our executive meetings, we can approve them, but the process is not complete until the Council votes and approves our recommendation from today's meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct. Yes.
So at the earliest, there would be sometime after that whenever.
Correct. And maybe that Mike and Jeannie may not get to that task till, say, March.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
The only thing that Open Meeting Law speaks to about that is you can't hold them for a year and, you know, year on year. You really need to annually make sure you do it at least once. That's why Jeannie and I tried to get to it a couple of times a year.
Okay. Thank you. Pat, any questions with that?
Nope. Thanks.
Okay. So I'm sure we've all had a chance to look at them. I'll start in the past. Now, we had two executive sessions. And we'll start there and then we'll review the last meeting of both. So November 20th. Are there any corrections, changes, or observations that we need to correct here? I did not see any. No? Okay, so I'd make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for November 20th.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second and I think we need to do a hand count. So Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Tom, yes? Our next executive session was on December 1st. And I'd like to entertain a motion there as well.
I'm over accept the executive session minutes of December 1st.
And I'll second that. All in favor? Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom, yes? Now, that brings us to our last meeting, which was on December 1st and the regular session minutes. Once again, Kathy, I did an exceptional job. I did not see anything. I don't know if there are any observations for any changes?
Nope.
No? All right, seeing and hearing none. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the Town Manager Evaluation Subcommittee meeting, regular meeting of December 1st, 2020.
So moved.
I'll second.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Tom, yes?
Good job.
So yeah, good job, Kathy. So our minutes are out of the way. Now, with regards to the actual document, as I, in the original document that I would, I just compiled from our conversations and tried to incorporate it all into one document. I found, and it was an observation made by Pat as well, that we're missing the instructions on how to fill out if we decide to use the performance category scoring as indicated, on how to do that. And there are many characteristics. And I luckily found that from the past and I sent that to you again, unfortunately, at the very last minute. So I think it's important to include those as an attachment so that when the counselors look at individual characteristics, they have a list that talks about the things that would be incorporated into an individual characteristic. And this is, Kathy, as you remember, this is what we've used in the past and I found it very useful.
Well, what I like about it is under each, like for instance, the first one, individual characteristics, there are one, two, three, five indicators where you get to, it further defines what the category means and you get to individually score each one.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Pat. Do you find that useful?
I find that useful, but I'm not sure that I would score each characteristic as is being suggested here. It's a very long task. It's hard to, to me, it would be the individual, the definitions under individual characteristics of diligent and thorough, exercise as good judgment, displays enthusiasm, blah, 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 are very important so that I can put a value on individual characteristics from one to four.
Right.
Rather than, rather than try to show on a form that I built that one through four value by five, one through four values.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think what you're saying, I.
Step too far.
Yeah, I think the intent here is that this is just an instruction attachment for use by the counselors only and not to be sent as part of the final evaluation. That would be part of the initial document that I sent showing a list. And then there, you can probably use this worksheet, if you would, to plug in that number. Yes, Pat?
Yes, Tom, I agree. What I would suggest is that these five categories of definitions under individual characteristics be made very small and put on your original document underneath individual characteristics. So that on one long, on one sheet, you have the, you have the requirement to score individual characteristics and you have the definition of it.
Okay, so for each counselor?
For each category and each council.
Thank you. Yes, Kathy?
I think I understand what Pat is saying and that makes sense. And it would be easy enough if this, was this form in Word? Oh, it's a PDF.
Yeah.
Well, it's easy enough to, it'll have to get retyped, but instead of leaving that underscore blank there, which kind of begs filling in, change that to bullets.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And that just informs the particular counselor who's evaluating that these are the things you should consider when you give that one to four score.
Okay, that, yeah, it does. Yes, Pat?
Kathy, I think that somewhere in the Town Hall, there should be a PDF Adobe Writer.
For converter?
Jackie should have that or Jackie or Jeannie should have that. They'd be able to convert this over and into a Word document and massage it or work within it, rather than have somebody like you retype it.
Yeah, no.
You know, as I look at it, I have a vague recollection and it's, it'll be difficult for me to look through my own files right now, but that looks as though that is the font that I typically work in. And I have a vague recollection that at the time, Mr. Kevin Manley was our President and he asked me if I would help him put it together, not the content. He delivered all the content and I formatted it, which is this, what you're looking at. And it may very well be on my cloud. And if that's the case, then I would have retained it in Word format.
Good.
When I send something out, I PDF it, but I would keep it in Word and then that is a five-minute task if that's the case, so.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Let's assume that that's the case because this definitely looks like how I would format any document with that kind of font and the left-hand block style.
Okay, so I guess the next step should be for you to review it or to look to see if you still have that.
Yep.
And hopefully you do. Next step would be if not, if not found, I would contact, I could send this document to.
And they can switch it back. Right.
Yeah, they can hopefully convert it. But it also brings us to another question. Who would put this formatting together? Can I ask her?
What do you mean, after each person fills it out?
No, I mean now, so that we have a finished document.
Well, if it's in my cloud storage, then I'll convert it and send it back to you. Probably by tomorrow, I can do it.
Okay.
It's not going to be, if I have it and I, the more I talk about it, the more I feel confident that I probably do, then I, there's not much to reformat except take out that underscore and flip it to a bullet.
Yeah, and then change the goals.
Right.
That were listed.
I had a thought about that too, but Pat wants to talk.
Yes, Pat?
Well, I just wanted to suggest, yes, in addition to removing the lines and replacing them with bullets for each category, you also want to put in the an underscore next to individual characteristics for the scoring for that category.
Yes.
I'm sure you would, sure you would have done that.
Yeah. So I'll clean, I can clean that.
But I agree, I agree with you, Kathy. I like this format. I think that the individual characteristics definition should be very small, just barely, barely big enough for we all people to read so that the thing doesn't get long. And then I, then I would say maybe there's a couple of other format things, but I think this format's nice, Tom.
On the second document I sent?
The one you sent this morning.
Yeah, if Kathy did work on that, then obviously.
I haven't looked at it in detail, but it sure, it sure reads right.
Yeah, it does. I know a lot of time was spent on it in the past and Kathy has it. It'd be easy to. Yes, Kathy?
As I'm thinking back, when Kevin Manley, he did a lot of research on various formats to use for an evaluation. He did a pretty extensive Google search as well as he contacted, he reached out to municipal networks. And so those indicators underneath any of those categories, they're not homegrown. They came right from somebody else's recommendations.
Right. Okay. Good, so we're all in agreement that this is the format that we would like to use, but we can also.
Generally speaking, I'd like to go through.
Right. Yeah.
May I ask, we talked about this generally in our last meeting, that for those rankings, what we're looking at right now goes from five excellent down to one poor. Didn't we have some generic conversation around just using one to four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. We felt that five was needed. So we would have to somehow merge the performance evaluation general template with this information into it as an attachment for like a worksheet for the counselors. Okay. And we have incorporated in it like we had with this previous document that we used, the five goals, which were, I'm told, have been communicated to the Town Manager and signed off on. So that's my understanding. So those can be incorporated into that as well to allow some sort of ranking.
It's not here. Yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, in a very casual conversation with Pat last week, he asked if I understood, it was around your question, Tom, to President Kane, that has the evaluation been signed off on? And the answer is, as I'm told, yes, that occurred in December. And what did the sign off represent? And it represented that he had, the President had reviewed the evaluation with the manager. So in that conversation with Pat last week, I offered to reach out to Mike just to clarify that. And there's two parts to it, that the review has occurred and the sign off has occurred. But I don't believe, and this would need Mike's input, so, because I don't want to put words in his mouth. My understanding from his comments to me is that the agreement to specific goals is pending because the manager feels that should be done, that she should have input into that.
Okay, so that's discussion still to be held.
Right.
Okay. In the meantime, we can put them into the document because it's easy to take them out once they're in there, just for a draft.
Yep.
Just for some direction. And I don't, I'd rather get this right the first time out. And since that meeting doesn't seem to have occurred, I think the expectation was that we might have something ready by next Tuesday. But it sounds like a few major things need to happen before that. So this is, I don't think this is critical to get it on that agenda. We can wait until February in the event that we need to meet again sometime in January to finalize it.
Right, or we can meet before, should there be a second January meeting, we certainly can meet again, the three of us, so that it could go on the late January agenda.
Yeah, good point.
I would agree. I don't see any urgency to this. Really, the counselors aren't going to pay any attention to it until April or May.
Right.
Correct.
Send it out and ask them to, so they can approve it anytime between now and April and May or tweak it. So better, like, I agree with you, better make it right.
Yes, I mean, take our best stab at getting it 99.9% correct.
Even if it takes.
Yeah, since we're missing the vital information on the actual goals that were discussed and approved on, we really can't finish the document. Okay.
Fair enough.
Any other comments, suggestions, recommendations?
So we're going to take the, on page two, we're going to take the excellent.
I'll remove that.
Yes.
Which we talked before. Okay. Do we agree any item left blank will be interpreted as a score of three? Or is it not, not counted?
Well, since we're only, I think that can come out entirely because that would, to me, reference the fact that somebody forgot to score one of the subcategories.
No, good point.
If they're bullets, then just, let's just remove it.
Yeah, good. Yeah, okay. That can be removed. So with those few edits.
Well, I'm still reviewing. Do we want the counselors to have to initial each page?
I believe, Kathy, and you can probably speak to that from the past, that it has to be signed off on because you need to ensure that the information came from each individual counselor, since it's going to be on file in HR. Am I correct, Kathy?
Yes.
So to initially.
If, when the document is returned to whoever is collecting them and it's stapled together, then you could get away with the one's initial, but if it comes back loose, well, you're asking for trouble.
Yeah, yeah, or if it comes back.
You're asking for, for not trouble, but confusion.
Yeah, or it comes back via email.
Right, yeah.
And you print it.
It shouldn't come back by email because then it's on the server and it could be subject to freedom of information and it contains confidential information until approved.
Yes, good point. Something to remember in the future when we do complete this. And I know, again, as I say, that I, as you know, both you know, I'm a firm believer in giving everyone time to review and vet the information, but since we're not really going to take a vote on this today, we've given Kathy, who's kind enough to step up again, the direction that she needs to put this together in a draft format and send it, send it back to us for our individual comments. And then after that, we can meet again to, and I can find out if Mike has met with Mary to review and approve the final, the five goals and we can put those in or sign off on those as well. Yes, Pat?
Tom, you're not implying that we should stop our review right now, are you?
Review of.
Of the document. So Kathy can have our input, including her.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Okay, because I would go back to page one, since Kathy has pointed out that we don't want this to become a public document. And somewhere on page one, we need to put that it needs to be returned by mail in hard copy. Sign it and return it to the Town Council President. It should say. Yeah.
Yeah, good observation, Pat. Yeah.
What do we call it? We don't want to call it snail mail.
Yeah.
They can put it in an envelope and leave it at Town Hall in the President's mailbox.
Sure, they could do that as well.
I can clean that up.
It has to be in hard copy.
Define it in some way, in hard, via hard, or in hard copy.
Yeah. Okay.
In hard copy, personal and confidential.
Yeah.
There, that's what I think we need. Okay.
And you would suggest putting it, return to the Town Council President in hard copy?
In hard copy, personal and confidential is what my suggestion would.
That, that's a typical format, yes.
Okay. Then page two, we're going to remove number five.
Yep, and we're going to remove the sentence after number five.
Right.
Yes. And anything left blank. I wouldn't imagine that given our council, that anybody would intentionally leave something blank. I think it's important everybody understands the importance of it, would use their best judgment to fill it in.
It's just that there were so many bullets here that, you know, it's hard for anybody to say, yeah, I can make a judgment on that. You really can't.
Yeah.
But I think if, if we just replace it with bullets, then you can decide whether, on the average, those definitions meet a plus, merit a plus for that category or sideways.
Right.
Right.
And this would still be used in conjunction with a self-evaluation that Mary could basically take this document and fill it out and send it to us about how she feels she performed during this time.
Yes.
Would give everyone an indication of how to rate these. That's how I see it. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so that brings us, I think, because, you know, all the rest is just boilerplate. That brings us to page six. Before the narrative evaluation, do you want to put in the formal goals and scoring here? Or do you want to wait till after the narrative evaluation? I don't, I don't have a, I haven't thought about it long enough to know where, where it would fit best.
Why don't we leave it for now and each of us consider what you just posed?
Well, it's just a matter of where to put it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the narrative evaluation, the location or placement of it in the document?
Well, I guess we know where that is. The question is, where would the goals go?
Yeah. Right now, on the original document or draft I sent, it's on page two.
Right.
It says 2021 goals. And I don't know if that's the right place for it, but it, as far as the flow goes, it made sense to me at this time. And we can certainly put it anywhere else, move things around in the document.
Well, if you put it first, it would really make those goals the fundamental thing we're looking for. And while I agree they're important, I'm, I think that this, these characteristics are equally important. So it's, you know, I would really have to think about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can certainly entertain moving the 2021 goals once they're finalized as the first item before the performance category scoring.
Yeah, first or last or middle.
Yeah.
Okay. Going back to the narrative evaluation, what would you identify as the Town Manager's strengths expressed in terms of the principal results? Actually, I think that should be P A L, principal. Kathy would know because she's a teacher.
What was that? I didn't hear what you, I was writing.
What would you identify as the Town Manager's strengths expressed in terms of the principal results?
Oh, that should say A L.
Yeah. Well, we all do it. I mean, I.
I was daring to.
I'm no saint when it comes to that.
I was daring to bring this up, knowing that Kathy drafted this, saying, oh.
And Spelchette would catch that.
Kathy, tell him, he's in trouble with the teacher.
That's it. He's going to be sitting in the corner.
Okay. I also have a suggestion. What performance areas would you identify as most critical for improvement? And I hate the term improvement. And I hate the term improvement. I'd like to use a term like addressing, most critical for addressing.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that word change. Kathy?
That's okay.
It makes sense. Wordsmithing is good.
On the next page, what constructive suggestions or assistance can you offer the town manager to enhance performance? To me, the to enhance performance also grates on me, and I would just say, what constructive suggestions or assistance can you offer the town manager?
Okay. I think the intent, yeah, I think the intent is clear, but it gets rid of word, those last few words. And the outcome is going to be the same, I would imagine.
I hope so.
Yeah.
And those are my comments from this form. Because I like the way it flows, except it's just too long, and we're going to solve that.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, Kath?
I don't have any right now. I think once all these adjustments are made and we can consider it as a draft and look, review the flow of it again, and the appearance, we may have some more refining to do, but right now, I think we're okay.
Yeah, and I think we're all in agreement that this is not urgent, that we rush this through and try to get it on the.
Well.
Yeah.
In fact, we should let sleeping dogs lie for a while, Mary's obviously really, really unbelievably sensitive to it, so just the mention of this committee is.
Okay.
Push it off, push it off for late January or February.
All right. I think that gives Kathy time to spend the time that she needs without missing time with her grandchild. Is there any other business?
Kathy, did you, have you had a chance to look at it?
Just since I opened it up at about 10 of 10, well, no, 20 after 10, so I have not really drilled down into it, that's why I'm thinking that if we, if I produced a draft based on the input this morning, then we can make sure that it's as tight and clean as we would like it.
Yeah, Kathy, just a suggestion too, if you have, since I know you haven't really had the time to review it, and again, that's that was my issue, if we, if you want to, if you have a recommendation for anything, you maybe put it in red. And then when it gets sent to us, we'll know it's your comments and we can review it at our next meeting. To, so we don't lose track of it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That make sense? Yes, Pat?
Yes, yes, it does make sense, because that gives Kathy full, full input, as though she'd have more time to think about it.
Correct.
And we can see her changes, my suggestion is, there's really two documents we're talking about here, this one here is the document we would send to the counselors to receive their evaluations. I think that the document that would go to Mary would be a little different, might not have all the instructions on page two, and would certainly have to have a different sign-off sheet.
Right.
So that's something we also need to think about in terms of creating two, two documents. Because I don't think, well, I know, we're not going to be actually copying any part of this and giving it to Mary. It'll all be summarized by this committee.
Right, and the first document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think there's going to be two documents, I think we need to think about that.
Yep. Okay.
And I think Kathy already has the sign-off sheet that was used last time. It's not part of this packet, but it would be two, two different forms with much the same information, but after we've aggregated it all together.
Yes. Okay. And just, Kathy, I don't know if you know the answer to this, since you had the conversation, you know, the general conversation with, like, the additional comments and suggestions for consideration that we've compiled from all the counselors. And I think that number is, there was what, 36 of them?
Yes.
Those that we've identified as conversational, did those take place? I'm assuming they did.
All took place at the same time, that was my understanding from Mike's responses.
Yeah, so I'm assuming, and mine too, that that conversation did take place and that these were just a general conversation to say, these are some of the thoughts of some of the counselors. And, you know, just to be aware of.
Not that these are your 34 goals.
Yeah. No, they're not.
No.
We know that. Okay.
Got one more.
Yes, Pat?
Tom, I'm now looking at your document, and before the narrative evaluation, you've put in a very important introductory sentence that says, responses to each question reflect consensus remarks of the seven town council members who completed the town manager's performance evaluation. And that's missing from the longer one, probably because you wrote it.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it's important that the, that the manager understand and that the counselors understand that there will be a consensus.
Okay. Kathy, do.
I think we can't, I'll have to look back through to find that particular wording, but it'll.
Yeah, I think it was in one of our other documents, which is in the Word document.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it won't, and it won't fit exactly right, Kathy, because what this would be, this would be what would appear on, on Mary's copy, but what would appear on the counselor's copy would be something different, it would be your narrative evaluations will be edited to consensus by the town manager evaluation performance committee. Something like that, these, these narrative evaluations, you know, in some way to let them know in advance that these won't be the same as we've done in the past, which is repeating them all, repeating them all, repeating them all, repeating them all. Because, and the reason I say that is because before, we just asked them for a single paragraph, well, how do you think, how do you think it went? And so we gave five or six lines, but here, it would be 100 lines each.
Yeah, and the narrative evaluation area.
And they're going to be in the mindset of thinking that whatever they write here is going to appear on her evaluation, and we're going to, we're going to, I think, should notify them that while we're asking for a narrative evaluation, we are going to summarize.
Right, so it's really a narrative summary, not a narrative consensus.
We'll make it a summary, we're asking them.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just think they should know that ahead of time.
Yeah, good point of clarification.
And I think that Mary should know that it doesn't reflect the actual wording, it reflects the wording of the committee's honest evaluation and summarization of the true thoughts of the counselors.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does, okay.
You and Kevin did a heck of a job.
Yeah, it's really good template to start with, it's really useful. And combine that with our first document, I'll call it, that will be Mary's use, I think the two go hand in hand, and once the tweaks are made, we can have something substantial to look at and finalize.
Okay, good.
Yeah, okay. So as far as a next meeting, if we do have a second meeting in January, and that's the if, I will attempt to put something together prior to that for our committee. If you could send me your best times and dates, so if I look at the, let me grab my calendar here. So if you look at the next council meeting, is the 12th, and if we have a second, that would be on the 26th. So is there a good date and time the week of the 18th? For you folks, and just, you know, send me, you can send it to me in an email, let me know what you would prefer.
It would need to be earlier in the week, because once we agree on something, we'd need to clean it up and have it available for Jeannie by the morning of the 22nd for backup.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
That week, though, is a holiday Monday?
How about if we pencil in the 19th, and if we are, there's no urgency to use it, then we can decide, and if there is an urgency, then that's the day we meet.
Okay, it's good for me in the morning.
And this time works for everyone, at 10:30?
Yeah. It's terrible, but I'll make it, I'll make it.
All right, well, thank you both, it was a very productive meeting. And unless there's any further comments, I entertain a most into adjourned.
The moves. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom, yes.
Thank you, Kathy, for what you're about to do.
Yeah. Again. Kathy, thanks again.
You're welcome.